Commissioners briefing meeting, call the meeting to order. Commissioners, are there any other items you'd like to have on the agenda for discussion today other than those that are already listed on the published agenda? All right, then we will follow this as our agenda for the meeting. First up is a legislative debrief and some discussion about the upcoming 2024 legislative session. And Tim Love is here to help us get started on this item.
All right, good afternoon Chair and Commissioners. Today, as the Chair said, we have a legislative debrief. So, purpose of today is to sort of look back in time to the 2023 long session, understand kind of some of the accomplishments that came out of that session based on the Commissioners adopted legislative agenda from 2023, but also understand some of the items that maybe weren't addressed that could still be priorities for this board. From there, we'll talk about moving forward into the 2024 short session, which is projected to start in April. And to sort of lead this discussion, I'll be clicking. But in this hybrid scenario, we'll be hearing from our Ward and Smith team. They're on Zoom, and so you can see them. And we've got Whitney Christensen, as well as Trachten Dinwiddie. So they'll be leading the discussion, and hopefully this hybrid situation works for us.
I'm sure it will. Always does. All right, thanks, Tim. And thanks for joining us. So we'll turn it over to you guys to talk to us a little bit more about what happened last session and what's coming up in the 2024 session. Trachten and Whitney, do you want to?
Wonderful. First starters, can you all see our PowerPoint? I know that Tim's manning it.
We can.
Okay. Trachten, do you want to kick us off with a summary of our victories from 2023?
Certainly, yeah, I'd love to. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, thank you so much for having us today. It's a, overall, it's a pleasure to be with you virtually. It's also a pleasure to represent the county. We have come today, as Tim indicated, to talk a little bit about the 2023 session and really talk a lot about what's going to happen in 2024 there and beyond. Tim, I cannot see our slides, but I'd love to hop right into slide number one. That's the legislative victory slide. And I will just kind of set the table here by saying, everyone knows that we had a very long session. The session lasted in 2023 from January until about November. Of course, there was the all-important state budget, the biennial budget that the long session is really, that's what it's all about. That was held up for multiple weeks, months frankly, because of some disagreements around some gambling legislation, potential casino authorization here in the state, throughout the state, as well as, of course, Medicaid expansion, which wasn't triggered until the state budget was actually enacted back in October. So that has set the table. I wanted to walk through some of the highlights of the victories, that we like to call them the wins, for the county that we were able to bring back home to Buncombe County. First of all, that is, I would say, one of the more important ones, at least from our conversations with the Commissioners, and that's the Barnardsville flooding situation. Of course, the Commission gave us a great story to tell back in Raleigh about how there's a, there's a post office and a small business, as well as Barnardsville Elementary School, that has been frequently plagued by nuisance flooding. It's not necessarily just when a hurricane or tropical storm comes through, but really just five or six times a year on a hard rain. So we were able to deliver almost $3 million for that project. As I understand, there's a great partnership going on between the county, NC DOT, and some private development to remedy the stream, to remedy the bridge, and hopefully this will take care of the rest of that project and folks won't be plagued by that nuisance flooding any longer. Moving down the list, we were also able to secure a $2 million pilot program for French Broad River water quality. So the idea behind this initiative would be to basically fund grants for agriculture operations for farmers who may be pretty close, if not right on, the French Broad River, and help them kind of move some of their operations away from the river a little bit, install some BMPs. We heard continuously throughout our representation that there's some concerns about water quality on the French Broad, and we hope that this is the beginning, but not the end, of some remedial efforts there. In our mind, this hopefully, this program will inform a much larger, perhaps statewide, perhaps even basin-wide approach. So we're hopeful to see what will happen from that $2 million we were able to secure. In addition to that, there was a $7 million appropriation for an economic development transportation project. That's great to see, and you know, not surprising to see more economic development coming to Buncombe County. So that was wonderful. In addition to that, and this is a fund that the General Assembly enacted back in 2021 in response to some of the COVID money that was coming from the federal government. They saw it prudent to establish a grant program, excuse me, for counties to provide additional supplemental funding to public school teachers. Initially, the county was not eligible, but through some of the work that we did, as well as credit to Tim and his team there at the county, we were able to tweak that provision and allow the county to be eligible for those funds. So that is $59.4 million, as you see on your screen now. Now, that's not all going to the county, right? That is the big pot that goes to, I believe, about 90 of the state's school districts. That will be allocated on a pure per pupil basis. Moving down at the bottom of this slide, you will see 350 new slots for innovations, innovation waivers. Those are innovation waivers for intellectually and developmentally disabled individuals in the community, right? So that was not as much of an increase that we had hoped for, that we'd lobbied for, that we'd worked on, but we were glad to see the General Assembly recognizing that issue. And so pushing, continuing to push that, I think, will be prudent, especially in the short session. And that's something we obviously take a lot of pride in advocating for. Next slide, please, Tim. And Whitney, would you like to handle the next budget highlights?
I would be happy to, and I'll pause right here to say that you all are truly to be congratulated on a really successful 2023 long session. Your agenda was really strong and aggressive going into the start of the biennium last January. And you can see just from that first slide that you achieved a handful of the top items that you were seeking from the General Assembly during the long session, which is fantastic, particularly when you consider that the last three or so months of that session were so heavily bogged down with the commercial casino authorization debate that almost no legislation was moving. So you all are truly to be congratulated for a really successful 2023 long session. There are more victories on the next slide. Tim, are you on the additional budget highlight slide?
We're there.
Okay, perfect. So we'll, we'll take you through those. You all Commissioners made it very clear to us that compensation for teachers and non-certified school personnel was really important to you. We took that message back to Raleigh and joined a choir frankly of other groups, both education-related and municipal and county government organizations that shared in that concern over how we're compensating the folks who serve our young people in the schools. And so we did see a very large overall pay increase for teachers and even larger increases for some other folks who work within schools. The number frankly, I think we all would have been pleased had it been even higher, but at the end of the day, we're pleased to see 7.5% average raises for teachers. Of course, that depends on experience, and there was a stair step there in the state budget. But overall, the average was 7.5%, which is pretty healthy, as well as a non-certified school personnel, 7% raise for the biennium, and then a 2% increase on top of that for bus drivers. And we all know how important those positions are and how critical it is to compensate those folks so that we can fill those empty positions across the state. And so that's a huge win, and we congratulate you guys on that. Then next, you all were so clear to us as well that you wanted to see those same raises for all state employees. And we know you've got a large population of state employee residents within the county. And so we did see that, it was pretty comparable, not exactly identical, but pretty comparable to what we saw for teachers. There was a 7% average raise for state employees, and that includes employees of the UNC system and the community college system. That raise, of course, was over the biennium with about half of that, a little more than half coming in the first half of that biennium, and a little less than half coming in the second half of the biennium. And then state highway patrol personnel received an 11% raise. So that was great news too, and that was one of the top items on your agenda. So that's, that was wonderful to see. We also saw a $70 million appropriation for the Housing Finance Agency. You all continue to stress to us how important it is to you to solve the affordable housing crisis. We know that's a statewide problem, but it's plaguing Buncombe County, perhaps worse than just about anywhere in North Carolina. And you guys have been loud and clear to us about the need to invest more state resources there. And so we carried that message back to Raleigh and are pleased to report that lawmakers in both chambers and both sides of the aisle were very receptive to that, that crisis and the need to plug more state resources behind it. And so more funding for the Workforce Housing Loan Program is a wonderful thing, and we're proud to be one of many voices lobbying for that. And then last but not least on this slide, we were right out front, second only to probably the American Flood Coalition in lobbying for a $30 million appropriation to provide grants to local governments for transportation infrastructure resiliency, so roadways and other transportation modes that have proven to be particularly susceptible to flood events, heavy rain events. This pot of money would go towards projects to make those roadways more resilient. And at the top of our mind in advocating for that was, of course, the bridge that goes into Barnardsville there, that's been at the top of your list for a few years now. And so if there is any remaining funding need after the appropriation you won in 2022 and the appropriation that we helped win for you all in 2023, I think that pot of money would be an excellent resource for you, for you all. And so those are our wins for 2023. And I'll just say again, you all fared better than most cities and counties in North Carolina. You had a terrific season, and we'll call it a winning season, great job. And then, Tim, if you, if you don't mind, could we go to the next slide?
We're there.
Okay, wonderful. Trachten, do you want to take us through a few of the items that remain on your biennial agenda that we think should be good priorities for 2024? It'll be a quick session, but there will be a state budget, and most of these things would fold neatly into that. And so we'd love to cover that with you now.
Certainly, yes, that was great. And as, as Tim pointed out, we do expect the General Assembly to come back in late April. They're due back on April 24th. Frankly, we don't anticipate too much action happening then, but it'll, it'll quickly pick up. The main objective of that session is to pass what Whitney calls state budget. We call it sometimes a budget adjustments bill. So it's just a one-year budget adjustment to reflect changes in tax and revenue shortage or surplus for just one fiscal year. That'll be the main objective. There are going to be obviously a few more policy items that'll sneak through the General Assembly, but that's really our main focus. So moving from there, I think that top of, top of the list, and I don't have to tell the Commission or the public this, but it's state employee salaries, it's teacher salaries, it's our non-certifies. We've had conversations over the past couple of weeks, and folks see in the media what's going on in Durham County. I think that that is, that's a message that's being received in Raleigh. You know, there's a, there's a large pay dispute, if you will, that's led to some closures. I know there was about 12 or 13 schools that were closed last week. So that's, that's a big issue that lawmakers are paying attention to. I think that that will play very well into our, into our talking points here. Moving down the list again, the innovations waiver slots. There was a presentation this morning at the General Assembly by Secretary Cody Kinsley, and he, he really emphasized the need for additional funding and resources in all areas in the ADD community. So again, we expect that message will be well-received. And I should have said, these are in no particular order. At the bottom of that slide, you will see McCormick Field. Whitney and I spent a tremendous amount of time and felt fairly, fairly good about the proposal that was floating around the General Assembly last year. That would have created a $25 million grant pot for which local governments, owners of the established stadiums in communities think of Kinston, things, places like that, that aren't necessarily as well-off, right? So that was going to be a $5 million maximum grant. Unfortunately, we were not able to see that through, but Whitney and I have had great productive conversations with local delegation members, with other representatives and advocates that were working on this. And while I don't think that the project is in peril, we feel pretty confident that we're going to have a good, pardon the pun, swing at that one next year. So that's one that we love to advocate for. We know how important it is to the community and to the Commission. We've heard from the Commission that they're hearing from members of the public. So that's, that's a message well-received to us.
Yeah, and want to thank also the Commissioners who've been really helpful on that one. Several of you have been engaged and taken meetings in Raleigh on that, given great examples of the emails and letters you received from your constituents about the importance of McCormick to the community. And so just thank you all for your efforts to support us there. The MLB has been a wonderful partner too. They've attended meetings, so many meetings with us and without us, lobbying for the importance of this grant program. And, you know, I hope that we'll have another good go at seeking that in the 2024 short session. But yeah, that, that one's been at the top of our list in terms of effort and energy, and would love to see good results on that.
And Tim, we can move on to the, to the next slide and go over a few more remaining issues.
You can go ahead, Trachten.
Okay, super, thank you. So again, we'll see some more items that were on the biennial agenda. Again, we, we feel confident that a lot of these are going to land quite well. So we have seeking additional state funding for early childhood education and pre-K programs. That was again, part of the presentation that Secretary Kinsley gave to the General Assembly this morning. There was a report that was put out, a collaborative report from the Department of Commerce and DHHS that really outlined a roadmap, if you will, for increasing the bureaucratic, not increasing, but remediating some of the bureaucratic issues that we see in the programs. Of course, there's always going to be additional funding that's needed. We, we recognize that issue, right? And the General Assembly has always been a little, little tight with the purse strings, we could say. But that's something that we think will land well, especially kind of with the, with the Secretary and the administration setting the table for us a little bit. Moving down the list, oppose any proposal that would limit local government authority in regulating of short-term rentals. We have obviously seen a good amount of discussion locally around this issue, but that's not independent of Buncombe County. It's been a topic floating around the General Assembly and debated for, for many years now. I would say close to all of my career. I would not expect, but I would not be shocked if there was some action that we would have to, have to engage in on that. So I believe I said at the Commissioners briefing last year that half of our job is the legislative agenda, but the other half is playing defense on items that we don't necessarily anticipate. And I think that that's, that's a perfect example here with the short-term rental potential. Moving down the list, we can talk a little bit about property tax relief and a potential expansion of the homestead exemption. In the short session, the General Assembly generally does not tackle large tax changes, tax policy. But in the request of just a study, I think that we would be, we would be a little bit more likely to see that come through. So we're looking forward to hopefully having some productive dialogue there. Again, on the tax issue, the North Carolina House occupancy tax guidelines, that is an issue that we've spoken publicly with the Commission a few times now. I think folks are aware of the ratios that are stipulated by the North Carolina House Committee, Finance Committee's tax occupancy guidelines. They are pretty, pretty rigid, I would say. We have, we've worked to achieve a balance where the, the county is right up on the edge, but there are no real flexibilities there due to those guidelines. Those are conversations that I know your local delegation has been having with finance and tax leaders at the General Assembly, I think specifically of Senator Mayfield and Senator Daniel. I know those conversations are ongoing and we'll obviously be participants in those. And finally, we'll talk a little bit about broadband. That is something that has been a focus of the General Assembly as of, I'd say, the past four or five years. Again, going back to the previous point that I made, a lot of the impetus was because of federal money that has come down to the state and to the local municipalities to allocate. While the General Assembly's policies have not, and I predict would not really change as far as who, who, who can deploy those broadband dollars, there's been tremendous investment. And I know the bipartisan nature of that investment is spread throughout the state. So we'll look to see additional secure money in broadband. So that's, that's what I have, Whitney, would you add anything before we characterize what's going to happen in the next session?
Now, I think you all have given us a really great list for the biennium, and we spoke with Avril and Tim about this last week. You all, I think, deserve a lot of credit for setting really realistic, actionable goals and also deserve a lot of credit for the relationships that you've made and built upon with your legislators over the last session and really prior to that, the session before that, the end of the prior biennium. You all have done a wonderful job of, you know, making inroads with both your House members and your Senate members from both sides of the aisle, from spending time with them in Raleigh, to having productive dialogues with them back home, to inviting them to conversations like this. I just think you guys are doing all the right things in terms of keeping those legislative relationships strong. And while, you know, maintaining great relationships with legislators will never be an explicit item on your legislative agenda, it kind of is the secret sauce that feeds into all of the other items that you're shooting for. And I think you guys are doing a wonderful job of that. And I know we enjoy working with your entire delegation, and I see nothing but good energy between you all and each of them too, which is just fantastic. And we, we don't encounter that with every local government client we have. So kudos, kudos to you all on that. And Tim, I do think we're ready for the next slide.
You're good.
All right, last but not least, and I know Trachten already hit on this, but the short session will officially begin on April 24th. It will take them at least a week to get off the ground, but then we expect it'll be pretty fast and furious. They hope to be done by July 4th. They missed that date about half the time. But I think they're pretty serious this year, particularly because the 2023 long session was so long, and they are so tired and so ready to get back to their campaigns in their districts. And so for that reason, I think it will just be a really intense period. The good news about all of that for you all is I would predict that you're going to be playing less defense than you normally would, and that's because there's just going to be fewer opportunities for catastrophic things to come out of left field or right field in a time when both the legislative session is so condensed, and also you're going to have really strict rules set by House leadership and Senate leadership about what can be considered. And they really are going to take what we expect will be a no-nonsense approach in terms of controversial items, big-ticket items that have had little debate and dialogue. And those traditionally are the things we worry about most with you all. And I'd be very surprised if any of those kind of surprise us in a session like this because they're really going to try to keep it streamlined and avoid controversy. But that being said, I do think they're going to allow enough, just enough controversy to debate commercial casino authorization again. But that's a big ugly bear that doesn't impact you all from what we can tell. And so hopefully, in terms of dodging grenades and playing defense, that will dominate less of our time for you all this session, and we can focus on more of the proactive work, like seeking those budget wins, additional teacher and state employee raises, additional non-certified school personnel raises, additional innovation waiver slots. All of those good proactive things that I think we will have an opportunity to work on in the budget. And so I think, you know, that's my high-level overview of the short session. Trachten, what would you add to that?
I think you covered it pretty well. I would just highlight for the Commission that I completely agree with Whitney. I don't think that we're going to see many new controversial items. Among the, the items that we predict could, could cause a little bit of controversy at the General Assembly, of course, it's the commercial casino debate. That is no secret, that, that's been all over the media, as well as potential legalization or authorization of what we call VLTs, video lottery terminals. Folks have a lot of different names for those, but those are the kiosks that you see in truck stops, some bars, convenience stores, things of that nature. That was a debate that was bubbling below the surface last year. Additionally, potential medical cannabis legalization is still floating out there. That is being pushed by one of the most powerful members of the Senate, Brunswick County Senator Bill Raven. So he's sort of the gatekeeper a lot of times on the Senate side. It will be interesting to see how those negotiations play out or, or whether that does indeed wait till 2025. And just before we, we take some questions and have some, have some discussion with the Commission, I did want to highlight, I think is what a significant change that we'll see. After the short session, of course, Speaker Tim Moore has publicly announced he's running for Congress. He will no longer be the Speaker. And we anticipate that Representative Destin Hall from Caldwell County will become the new Speaker. Of course, that's subject to some votes of the, of the caucus, as well as the body as a whole. But I only bring that up for the Commission to consider that, that we could see a major change in how business is conducted at the General Assembly. We could see shorter sessions, we could see longer sessions. There's just an opportunity there for Representative Hall and the new leadership team to kind of mix things up a little bit. Speaker Tim Moore has, has been in office for a long time. I believe he's the longest-serving Speaker in North Carolina state history. So just wanted to bring that up to the Commission. Obviously, nothing to worry about now, but something to consider as, as changes could, could come about in January 2025. So with that, Mr. Chairman, Tim, the Commission, I would love to take questions if you all have any. We're available as long as you'd like us.
All right, great. Trifton, Trachten, Whitney, thank you so much, great presentation. Tim, anything else you would add now?
I would just quickly state, just so everyone recalls, I know the Commission's aware, but this is your legislative agenda that was adopted in 2023. And so it's really, what we're talking about today is a continuation of something already adopted. The items that were on the screen today aren't new. Those were, you know, considered publicly by this board. But want to hear your thoughts on those items, as well as anything else that's kind of burning for you, so.
All right, Commissioners, any questions or thoughts on what we've done last year and the legislative session coming up?
I have a couple of questions and comments. So one, the first question, can you all, one thing that we were kind of tracking along the way was the state conservation tax credit. And if you can give us an update, that specifically came up when I was down in Raleigh at our State Ag State Steering Committee. Commissioner Troxler was there and was talking about how important this is for working farm conservation across North Carolina. And there seemed to be a lot of agreement in that room, which is a group of bipartisan Commissioners across the state. So if you have some updates on that, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, Commissioner Wells, that's a great question. You're right, it is frequently discussed at the General Assembly. So to give the Commission a little bit of background, that is the conservation tax credit that was previously enacted and then, of course, repealed. The North Carolina House, when they passed their budget back in April, actually did include a modified conservation tax credit in their finance package. That was sent over to the Senate, of course. But I will have to say that through, through the negotiations with the House and the Senate as they were, were working through the final conference version of the budget, that unfortunately did not make it. I can tell you anecdotally that over the past five to 10 years, the General Assembly has been a little bit more hesitant to enact tax credits and definitely favor the, the grant and aid type of model. But that's not to say that there's not tremendous momentum behind the, behind the conservation tax credit. And there's continuing support and advocates coming together. It's a large group of folks, a very diverse group of folks. So we remain hopeful, but yeah, that, that was unfortunately not enacted this past year.
Okay, thank you for that update. And the other item I'd like to bring up for us to consider advocating for that, that ties in with part of our legislative agenda around water quality, economic development, affordability, is the, the Canlar sewer extension, the utility with that. That would definitely tie in with those water quality goals that we, we had been doing, as well as now that we've finished our comp plan, that area is focused on mixed-use area two, which that sewer extension would certainly help us be able to meet, meet the goals of that plan. So I just wanted to put that out there as potential, because it seems as if this last go-around, there's definitely been a lot of focus on that kind of infrastructure funding. And so I'm thinking that potent, that has good potential this time with infrastructure funding as well. Do you feel like that would have, even in the short session, some good potential?
I do, I think that's a fantastic project. It would be at the top of my list, and I do think it fits very nicely with the priorities you've already established and tucks neatly within the water goal that you already have for so many reasons. I think that project would be probably the best appropriation that you could seek in 2024 of all the things that we've discussed. Water projects have been at the very top of the list of what could be funded with state dollars over the last three budget cycles. You all know that Barnardsville, in many ways, is considered a water project, even though, you know, it's a little bit of a reverse of what's traditionally funded. You're trying to handle water problems that already exist instead of run additional water out there. But you saw funding for that in 2023 and 2022. And you all have been unusually blessed in terms of receiving earmarks in several of the last budget cycles. Many of our local government clients will get one appropriation in a year and then not see any for the next year or two or three years. But you guys have had several consecutive appropriations. And so I do think if you were going to seek an earmark like this, you know, funding directly for a local government within the county, this would be your, your best sort of proposal because it fits very nicely with what they've really favored funding in last budget cycles. And part of that was due to a lot of federal funding coming down that could be used specifically for those types of projects. And then also because... types of projects. And then also because, you know, a lot of things likely won't happen in a short session. It's going to be as short as the one we're going to have. But the thing we can almost guarantee will happen is a budget. And so if we're going to get aggressive on an item, I would love for it to be something that we know would be a budget item. And this obviously would be. I also think it's in a good part of the county in terms of winning legislator support and, you know, aligning the right folks behind it within the General Assembly. And so for many reasons, I think that would be a great project if you all agree that it's something you want to pursue and we would love to help you work on it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other topics? And then maybe let's also come back to that idea. But are there other, any other ideas or questions that folks have about the session coming up?
I guess what's on my mind is, you know, what can we ask for budgetarily from this year's session? Sounds like that project is a good, you know, they feel like it's a good fit. So there's anything, you know, what's top of mind for me and probably will be for as long as I serve on this board is that our capital improvement needs over the next several years in terms of all the buildings we need to build. I'm thinking back to our December budget retreat. So if there's anything else other than a sewer extension, anything else that staff can think of that we can request funds for from Raleigh that would help meet that need?
Tim, is that something that has been thought about? Or, I mean, are most of those kinds of projects ones where the General Assembly and Traptan and Whitney feel free to chime in as well, they would look at it as well? You know, that's just a core county project. So that's y'all's job to do that. Or do we have some projects where, you know, that wouldn't be viewed through that kind of lens?
Sure.
Exciting. It's an interesting question, right? I mean, I think we just look at that and think, oh, these are things we need to do. But maybe there are different, you know, maybe it's a good idea to ask, right?
That's right. I'm glad to take a closer look at our CIP. There's a lot of needs and we can have that discussion internally. I would ask Whitney and Traptan to kind of chime in on Chair Newman's general thought about, you know, kind of county priorities versus sort of, you know, priorities maybe that are more growth oriented and whether that matters.
I don't want to dodge the question, Mr. Chairman and Tim, but I think it's really, it's project specific. I think it would be a good idea for us to sit down and have a deeper dive discussion as far as all of the projects that y'all are looking forward into over the next maybe five years. But that's, it's really a project specific item. I could see to the chairman's point, some members of the General Assembly saying, hey, this is, this is really something that the county should handle. This is really county function. On the other hand, I think that there are extenuating circumstances in the Buncombe County area as far as the growth that you all see and et cetera, where we can make the argument on the other side. So really, I believe it's more project specific than anything. To Whitney's point earlier, the General Assembly is very willing and has demonstrated over the past three or four budget cycles to invest in capital projects in general, whether that's, you know, highway projects, whether it's water and sewer projects, whether it's capital infrastructure for economic development, et cetera.
Yeah, I think Traptan said it best. Vertical infrastructure is probably the least of what we've seen in the budget in the past few cycles. There's been a lot more investment in like site readiness, you know, counties who want to prepare a mega site or really the utility projects, the water projects, sewer projects, those sorts of things have been much higher in terms of the prioritization. If you just scan through the budget document and look through earmarks, you're going to see, you know, about 100 to one water projects compared to the things I mentioned first. That being said, we can always put a creative spin on it. And so if you, maybe it makes sense for us to sit down and Commissioner Sloan, you give us that list of what you all have in mind for the next few years and we can kind of go through the list and see what might have a better chance, give you some advice on which items might be better budget asks than others, and then pursue the items that are towards the top of that list. And I'll give you one example. We have one local government client who wanted to seek funding for a new courthouse in the last budget cycle. And we reviewed the last several budget documents and really, there was very little precedent for that sort of, you know, construction of a building, particularly a courthouse. And so we advised them that it would be a very uphill battle, that it would be a difficult request that we would love for them to explore water projects that they might have in mind. Ultimately, we pursued it anyway and we were frankly somewhat shocked to get it partially funded. And so we received partial funding for that courthouse in the 2023 budget, but we were almost surprised that we were successful in that. And so traditionally, you know, building, going up is difficult in the state budget. But if we can put a unique spin on it, if it touches into one of the other buckets or areas that the General Assembly has demonstrated a sustained interest in, that those things would help. Also, the revenue forecast is really going to give us a better idea of how much leeway we're going to have in these things. It's no secret that North Carolina is one of the fastest growing states in the nation. Our revenue continues every year of my career has outpaced projections. They always end up with a surplus that they weren't expecting. First few years of my career, those surpluses were in the hundreds of millions of dollars. The last few years, they've been in the billions of dollars. And that's significant surplus. And I don't think that that sort of revenue collection that outpaces the state's needs is going to slow down anytime soon based on the growth that we're having, both individual growth, population growth, and corporate growth. And so for that reason, if we get a revenue forecast in April that just, you know, shows up with a $2 or even $3 billion surplus, we might find a more receptive audience for some things that they haven't been funding in past cycles. So I think that's going to be a big factor too. But, you know, if we're looking at all of these things as a whole, you know, kind of bird's eye view, I'd say in a short session, you have less time to prepare, you have less time to tee things up. You have less time over the course of this session to pitch your project to legislators. And so it might make sense to focus in the short session on something that we know is kind of tried and true, you know, and more likely to have success with. And that would be, you know, for example, the Kandler water project. And then if we're going to pursue something that's more revolutionary and kind of out of their comfort zone, maybe the long session in 2025 would be a better time for, you know, something like vertical infrastructure. But that's just my two cents. And happy to have, you know, we can set aside time to go through that.
Okay. I guess just the one other, just, I didn't really think of this prior to this, but just this conversation makes me think about it. I mean, I think the Kandler sewer project definitely seems like a good one to look at. It's been one we've been discussing as a body for a few years, right? And so there's a good plan for what that would look like. I guess it was one other project that kind of comes to mind though, too, is like, so the, you know, the Ferry Road project, right? So it's on public land, but it's got, it's got a water and sewer and road. I mean, there's an infrastructure piece to it, right? And then there's obviously the recreation and the affordable housing piece. So I just put that out there too, because it does have like a below ground infrastructure piece to it as well. So I would, it's a big project. Anything that could be contributed to it would be, would be great. So I'll just put that in the mix. But.
Needs a road, water and sewer.
It needs a road, water and sewer. And I think maybe the Kandler project would have even more traction because it's been looked at by MSD. It's been, the commission's talked about it over a number of years. So maybe if the thoughts are, you got to kind of pick one, maybe the, maybe the Kandler sewer is the one that's kind of makes, I don't know. I'm open to anywhere we get state resources to fund projects we want to see happen. But does anybody on the commission have any concerns about the idea of putting the Kandler project on the list or having the kind of the staff look at both of these kind of infrastructure projects and then maybe come back after talking with Traptan and Whitney with a recommendation for either doing them both or picking one of them or something like that?
I'd like to speak to the Kandler sewer.
Sure.
You know, this is my, starting my eighth year on the commission, and we've been talking about that the whole time I've been on. And by me being on the MSD Board too, representing us, we've discussed it there. You know, as a matter of fact, they have already said they could contribute $3 million, you know, to it. Of course, we need another 10 to do it. But I think when you look at growth and quality of life and what we need, when you look in the Kandler area, the problem we're having with septic tanks out there and the other problems and just restricting growth, that should be high on our priority list, I think, is the sewer, you know, out there.
All right. All right. So, so thanks for the presentation. I think it sparked some good discussions. So if the folks on the lobbying team and staff could kind of think about this a bit more and maybe come back with some suggestions on some additions to this that would, that would fit in well with a short session strategy, that would be great. Okay. All right. Tim, anything else on this?
No. Great. I appreciate the discussion and the time and want to thank Whitney and Traptan again for the work they do for us in Raleigh. Obviously, we can't be there all the time, so it's nice to have boots on the ground.
Yeah. Warden Smith, you guys have done a great job. You've really represented us super effectively. So it's been a great relationship. We've really enjoyed working with you and look forward to working with you guys in this upcoming session.
Thank you, Chairman. It is such an honor to be on your team and you all do everything right. You're so wonderful to work with, Avril, Tim, each of you. Truly is a privilege to represent the county. Thank you.
Great. All right. Take care.
Thank you all.
All right. The next item is about laptop donations and I think Tim's going to help us out with this too.
Chair Commissioners, pleased to talk to you about a broadband related topic. This is our first time discussing it publicly, so open to any thoughts that you have. To get through this discussion today, there's a number of folks that are here with us. We've got Erica Anderson, representing Land of Sky Regional Council, who would administer the program if approved. Additionally, we've got some folks on our internal team. So we've got our procurement manager here, Ron Ventarella, for any procurement related questions. Also have Eric Grau, our IT Director, who oversees kind of, you know, laptop devices, refresh, things like that. So we've got a few slides to get us through today. I'm going to jump in. So just kind of a quick overview, you know, this is the briefing, so we're not seeking action from the board, just kind of updating you on an idea and want to see if you'd like to move forward. So Buncombe County, you know, we have over 1,600 employees. Many of those have laptops. Those laptops get old and then they get refreshed. As those laptops are refreshed, they're stored and per county policy eventually surplus. And our county policy says that, you know, we send those laptops to gov deals where there's an auction process where folks can buy the laptops for some nominal amount of money. Land of Sky separately has kind of identified that access to devices is a primary issue for broadband adoption. You hear us talk about broadband a lot from an infrastructure standpoint, but there's the other side of like, you know, do you actually have a device to access the internet? So Buncombe County staff have been talking with Land of Sky. We think there's an opportunity to partner, to increase access to devices in the community while also efficiently getting rid of our surplus devices. To enact this program, a resolution would be required of this board that would allow the laptops to be directed to Land of Sky as our program partner rather than our typical surplus procedure, which would be to use the auction or gov deals process. So that's kind of the overview. I'm going to get into some details overall. Kind of touching on digital equity and like the why we're even bringing this forward, you know, so, you know, we know that access and accessibility vary across Buncombe County. We frequently talk about the infrastructure. We less talk about the devices in homes to access the internet. So we know that accessibility and access to devices decreases broadband adoption. And we've seen that it's impacted, you know, 10% of our population who don't have, you know, access to the internet because they don't have a good device to get on. One of the things that is important to understand is that, you know, how we access the internet has changed so much over the past 10 years, in particular with COVID. And it's not just about sending emails or things like that. It's how we access telehealth. It's how we develop skills. It's how we go back to school, things like that. So Land of Sky has come up with this device refurbishment program. And the basic idea, it's pretty simple. It's taking a device that basically no one else wants to use. It's an older device, refurbishing it so that it's up to a level that the average individual could use it and access internet services. The specific types of services folks would be accessing, again, telehealth, where you're calling your doctor virtually, you know, job training, where you're going back to school, the types of things that you don't necessarily want to do on your cellphone, basically. The objectives of the program, you know, we're refurbishing devices and diverting e-waste from our landfill. Additionally, you're increasing access to skills training, job seeking, improving access to governmental programs and services. The goal has a program, or the program has a goal rather, of 700 devices refurbished regionally per year. And then in terms of details about the program, you know, this program would be administered by Land of Sky, who would serve as a hub for the distribution of these devices to other community organizations. So they're not just keeping them for themselves. This would be restricted to, you know, organizations within Buncombe County. So we're not sending our devices to Haywood County, nothing against Haywood, but we're benefiting our residents directly. And over time, Land of Sky would report on how these devices are distributed. Like, we ultimately want to know who's benefiting from these devices, making sure they're getting into the hands of the right folks. So that's the program in a nutshell. In terms of the current state, so how are things currently operating? You know, how many devices per year? What's our policy say? So our laptop refresh and revenue stats currently, our revenue from gov deal sales is about $17,000 to $23,000 per year. And that can vary. But this is the actual sale of old laptops on gov deals. When you sell all of them, however many that is, we estimate to be between 450 and 500 per year, you get about $17,000 or $23,000 in revenue. In terms of what the personnel or surplus personal property policy says, that's a mouthful. The basic idea, you know, we've got some general statutes here, but all such items of personal property will be offered for public auction via an online auction vendor without further notice. So that's what the policy says. Like, there's no real ability to divert or go in a different direction. If commission was interested in pursuing this program, we would need to seek a resolution to allow that. Moving to our final slide, but then clearly want to open it up for discussion with commission to see if y'all would like to continue the discussion. The recommendation from staff is to consider a resolution that would donate all surplus laptops to Land of Sky for the next three years. The three-year number, we feel is a good amount of time to let the program kind of settle and get started, but also not so long that, you know, we can't take it back if we see that the program isn't working for us in terms of digital equity, but also in terms of getting these things out of our warehouse efficiently. The authority to do this, I'm not going to read the statute to you, but this is how we could do it. And Michael Frue has assisted on that. One caveat, I have to say it out loud, just so everybody knows, but any property purchased with federal funds has a different way of being disposed of. And so with any laptops purchased with federal funds, we would dispose of according to federal regs. Next steps, would like to hear discussion today. If commission would like to continue moving this item forward, we could bring it to the regular meeting on February 20th. This would require a public hearing that would need to be noticed. And glad to take any questions that commissioners have on this. If there's additional information you need, or if you want to keep going, or if you've heard enough from me on laptops, that's cool too.
Well, thanks, Tim. It sounds like an interesting, helpful program for a lot of our goals, especially making sure accessibility is a real thing for a lot of folks in our community. Just one caveat to give myself some peace of mind, you said Buncombe organizations and ideally some guidance to help specific Buncombe people as opposed to Buncombe-focused and then becoming a regional distribution site. Is that a valid concern or?
I think it's fair for commissioners to want to make sure that we're benefiting Buncombe residents. And, you know, if there's further discussion on like the types of residents want to benefit, you know, for instance, individuals in low to moderate income or something of that nature, we can certainly work with Land of Sky to ensure that that happens.
That would just be my two cents. If we can, if commission's on board, just an idea of what would be a priority, not necessarily a restriction per se to giving out laptops, but if we can give it to the folks who need it first, I think that might track very well with educational goals and low income folks.
Yes, I'm definitely supportive of us proceeding with this. And I like the way that you're framing it with the three years so we can really look at the program and make sure it's meeting our goals. And to Commissioner Moore's point, I'm guessing Sarah and the team there at Land of Sky have some very specific goals, but maybe bringing those back to us as far as how they, what their plan is around getting the laptops into the distribution.
Glad to bring those details.
To add to that, I'm.
To add to that, I'm incredibly supportive and as I'm looking at our strategic plan, it really crosses over into a lot of areas that we have looked forward to for 2025. One concern that I would bring forward, working in higher education is one of the biggest barriers to higher education is not only lack of broadband, but lack of an appropriate device. And seeing that that has really impacted our under-resourced or has impacted under-resourced students. I would be curious how that can be addressed. You know, not just our folks of low to moderate income, but, you know, our our students of color as well to make sure that they have access to those devices as well.
All right, any other questions or feedback on this? Sounds really positive. So thanks for the creative approach to this. Look forward to hearing more.
Great. Well, hearing the positive feedback today, we'll look to bring this to the February 20th meeting. At that meeting, I'll have Sarah Nichols back with me and we'll be talking about details that are more specific with you. One item I would share, you know, we talked just briefly about access. Another variable in access is affordability. And so if you haven't been following, the Affordable Connectivity Program is a federal subsidy program and which is on the ropes. And so we may see that sort of go away in the near future, unfortunately, but I just wanted to share in case you're talking to federal legislators in the future. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. All right, the next item is the school nurse contract update. And Ellis Matheson's here to help us out with this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Putting the presentation up? There we go. All right, this afternoon, wanted to bring you an update regarding our school nursing contract. So the current status for fiscal year 24, we have a contract with Mayhec to provide our school nursing services. As you can see, a little over $3 million. This does provide 31 school nurses across our school systems, which does include four of the charter schools. Most nurses are assigned to schools. One exception is for high schools because there is 1,000 plus students in those high schools. So the average school nurse has a nurse to student ratio of 1 to 851 currently. Oh, sorry, went ahead. And so we were notified by Mayhec that the current contract will leave a projected deficit of $231,600 by the end of the fiscal year. Couple of items leading to this deficit, there was some loss of COVID funding that we have had in the previous years. And they've had less than anticipated staff turnover, which is actually a great thing, right? They have been fully staffed all year long, so that brings that continuity to students, which is great. And so our recommendations that we're bringing today is to release an RFP and evaluate the service prior to fiscal year 25. We have released that RFP and those have come in and we're in the evaluation phase right now. Of course, continued collaboration discussions with Mayhec to problem solve. Mayhec has been an excellent partner. We have really seen growth in this program and so continuing those discussions to look for any areas where we can problem solve together. So we do recommend providing Mayhec additional funding support through this current fiscal year of $100,000. And with that, Mayhec says they will guarantee no reduction in schools services for the remainder of the school year. And they have identified within their current resources, the remaining dollars needed for that deficit. So we are not seeking additional funds, but we are seeking approval to repurpose $100,000 of the unspent funds in the homeowner grant. And so just to give you a brief reminder about that program, this was a board initiated program. It's in the second year of implementation. In fiscal year 24, there was 300,000 from Buncombe County and 150,000 from the city of Asheville. For the program administration this year, the application period was July 1 through September 30. Residents served, there's been a total of 622, 407 of those being Buncombe County. And grants awarded have totaled $229,551. And currently, total county program funds unspent is 113,000. So we are requesting support to repurpose $100,000 of that to close the school nurse program deficit. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Commissioners, the requests will come next week. We just want to give it to you for discussion and see any guidance that you might give us today.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we're fully staffed. That is positive.
I'm supportive of the nurse request. You know, I see this sort of unrelated to what did or didn't happen on the homeowner grant issue. So to me, it's like, do we want to spend this money or not, right? Like, so to me, that's kind of like a I realize like maybe you have to draw from the budget from one place to another, but I don't see that as like a substantive thing. So, but to me, I'm supportive of the nurse issue.
The substantive thing is because it's board, we don't want to just go take that money and spend it without coming back to you because it was initiated by the board. So if you want to leave the $100,000, is there the alternative to just appropriate and fund balance to do that? But the money's already appropriated. If you're fine, we could just move it around.
I am. I just, because like what's happened, I guess my point is just like, what's happened on the homeowner grant, it is what it is, right? So the question before us is, do we want to invest $100,000 in this nursing program or not? And I think, you know, sure, of course we do. So, yeah. All right. All right. Any other questions on this item? Cool. All right. Hey, thanks for the update.
Thank you. We appreciate the support.
All right, Commissioners, that's everything that's on the agenda. So we are adjourned. We'll reconvene at 5 o'clock for the regular meeting.